Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to welcome all to this evening's regular meeting of the Lakeview Public Schools Board of Education today, Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, 7:30 PM at the boardroom at the Wheat Educational Campus. Moving out, or for the benefit of the board, there's two items of revisions at our place this evening. One having to do with personnel item and the other one having to do with business. Moving on with the agenda, item B, the minutes of the special meeting of August 5, 2025.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The minutes of the regular meeting of August 5, 2025.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Secretary, have we any public communication this evening?
Yes, Mr. President, we do. Mr. Patrick Donovan?
Just so you're aware, you have three minutes to share. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Donovan. I live in St. Clair Shores in the Lakeview School District. I've been living there for the past nine years. My son's in Greenwood Elementary and is now in fifth grade. He's been in the latchkey program since he started at Greenwood. However, this year, just four days before it started, we found out that he wouldn't have a spot. As two working parents, we found that this was impossible to plan around. Our only option is to rely on my 75-year-old mother to drive 25 minutes each morning to come and take him to school. It's not a sustainable option or solution. She already helps us out by picking him up every afternoon, and now she's taking more than on than she should. Families shouldn't have to face this kind of situation because the district didn't plan ahead. We called the latchkey supervisor and assisted four times and left two voicemails. No one answered and no one returned our calls. I wrote two emails and again received no response. It wasn't until I asked Principal Pets to email on our behalf that we finally got a reply. That is unacceptable. When we finally got a response, we were informed that 150 families, 150 families were left without access to latchkey this year. We were also informed that some families who signed up on the very first day of registration were not accepted into the program. This highlights a program that is seriously flawed and disorganized. Since the initial email, there's been no communication or updates from that program. This isn't about the convenience of the parents, it's about the kids. This shouldn't be like a Taylor Swift concert where you're lucky enough to get in. This is a public school system that our family pays into and relies on. What's even worse, students from school of choice accepted into the program while Lakeview families who pay higher taxes to support these services were turned away. Our families are footing the bill for these programs, but our kids are being left out. It's not fair and it's not right. The reason that I moved to St. Clair Shores is because of the schools and the services like this. As a resident of Lakeview School District, I strongly ask the board to look into this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or public communication?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Item E, Board of Education Administration comments. Anything from the board? I see that we're off and running with our sports activities. Stadium is running full throttle, which is fun to see. This year, a year ago, was under construction, so it was quite a different situation, but it's all looking good now. Kids are back in school. This is our first meeting since kids getting back into school, so it's good to hear that things are going well and keep this thing moving forward. Any other comments from the board, Ms. Taylor?
I'd just like to say, I went to my first legislative board meeting, extremely disappointed that our state government does not have a budget. We rely on that budget, just so the public knows. We have to put our budget in, in June, to get approved. They don't have to put their budget in until now we're being told October 1st. It's really unfortunate. There are a lot of schools scrambling. We don't know what to expect. It's, I'm sure it's nerve-wracking for the whole administration. We just want the public to know that we are going to do everything we can to keep the programs going that we have. And if you can reach out to your senator or representative, tell them to get on the ball and tell them to get a budget done so that we can have something to rely on. It is, it's just really disappointing in the state of affairs between the federal and the state. We have really absolutely no clue what's going on with funds. So, other than that, I'm happy to be back.
Awesome. One other note to Mr. Donovan's comments. I'm sure somebody from the administration will get back with you regarding your comments. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? No? Administration?
Thank you for saying that, so I didn't need to. We have continued to be in contact with many different legislators across the state, some of our associations, you know, letters to the editor in the Detroit News and some things that are, you know, not complimentary at all, as you might imagine. We, we don't stop some of the things we want to do because we're unsure of what's going to happen, partly because we've got protection with some fund balance that's been generated, built up over years. You know, we're still trying to staff some of the positions that we've got based on, you know, based on enrollment and in programming. You know, there are many, many, just to Mr. Donovan's point, there's many, many latchkey positions that have been posted and some positions that are posted year-round because some of those people start and they go for a while and then they stop. Or when we have the number of parents who want services, just, you know, and that's not just latchkey, it's our preschool program, you know, the waiting list for preschool back in August, or back in March because the services are desired and we don't have a facility to accommodate it. In Latchkey's case, we have some facilities to accommodate, but we don't have staffing to be able to expand it. It's not that we're not trying, it's the things that we have to try to do and incentivize and motivate people to get the word out to, you know, apply. And we're not unique in that sense. Not necessarily every district is having that same kind of problem, but the nature of, of the staffing for schools right now, and it doesn't help when you have an uncertain budget situation from the state because 90% of our funds are state funds. They're not local funds, they're state funds. Everybody pays taxes to St. Clair Shores in this area, but St. Clair Shores sends that money to Lansing and then Lansing redistributes it based on the per pupil headcount and some other categoricals. It's unfortunate that's how it is, but it is how it is. You know, our bond election question, you know, that's sort of tied to these types of things, right? I had a question at the city council meeting last night from a council member, you know, that was, you know, wait, why don't districts be able, aren't you able to save for these kinds of projects? And I said, well, we save some for these kinds of projects, but you can't save, the way the state's funding is set up, you don't get enough money to save for, you know, every classroom heating and cooling unit in the district. You don't get enough money to replace all the roofs in the district from the state. It's not set up that way. They all know, the legislature knows, that local communities can do bond issues. And so they expect you to go and do that. They're not going to change the funding system at the state. You know, I liken it to this. If we have a $60 million budget and 35 million of that is employee wages, because we're mostly an employee-based organization. We have people who serve, work with kids, right? And if you think about the 35 million of that is employee wages and you say, okay, so how are we going to pay for that $3 million roof? Well, I guess we could give every employee a 10% pay cut and now we'd have 3.5 million to pay for one roof. That's putting into perspective, right? And if you cut wages by 10%, then you're going to have 30 of your employees leave. That's reality, right? So, you don't, you need to understand the facts, understand how the systems are set up before you ask questions that are intended to try to undermine how the system is in set. You know, we don't set the system up. The legislature and governor do that, but we have to work within it. And we've been pretty good at working within it, you know, credit the board and our leadership team, and even our, our union groups working with us on some of our solutions. So, Emily, I look forward to a good school year. We've got a good start going, albeit some of the little hiccups that are part of the interference of, you know, not being able to do the things we want to do. But our teachers are high-spirited and positive. Our principals, many, most of whom are in the room, are high-spirited and positive. I've been at a number of PTOs the last two weeks, visited city council, like I referenced, and the feedback I get when I do those things is, you know, very positive thumbs up sort of mindset and head nodding and et cetera. So, it's good to know that that's still the case, even when we have the uncertainty that we've got pending. So, I'll leave it at that.
Well, I believe the budget is supposed to be in place two weeks from today, right? September 30th is the...
Well, the state budget year ends September 30 and the new one starts October 1. If they don't have a budget, then we're in shutdown and then that's a different question for local districts and cities and counties all together. Because all of those different organizations rely on certain aspects of state funding. Ours is primarily state funding, 90%. Cities get a cost share, counties get a cost share. So, it's, it's a disaster, if you want to put it in that term, if they don't have a budget on October 1. They, they have a law that says they'll do it by July 1. Problem is, there's no penalty to them. Not a shock. There's no penalty to the people who set the law up to say, get your job done by July 1. You can get it done anytime before that, but get it done by July 1. Eh, okay, we didn't get it done by July 1. Ah, October 1, we don't have it done, we'll shut down. You know, the cavalier idiocy that that sort of displays is amazing. And some of these people want to run for bigger office. How about you do your first job right now? You had to set me up for that, didn't you?
Set me up. Just kicked it out of the park. Any other comments from the administration?
Yes, I would just echo what Mr. Paulson said. We are off to a great start. It's been exciting going around to the buildings and attending curriculum nights and, and seeing exciting staff and parents and kids. So, good things happening. I was sharing piece, one of my favorite parts of my job, out of all the things I do, is hiring staff. You're seeing lots of staff who are coming before you in these meetings, so that's a really great thing. That being said, as Mr. Paulson said, we still have positions that are hired. We are still actively trying to fill spots. Latchkey spots have been posted since spring. Actually, we had ones that were posted even before, but spring was even for that push of trying to get people in place to be able to open up as many spots as we can. Unfortunately, we're just not getting people. As much as we're trying, we're even doing creative and unique things. If you're a 20-hour or more employee, you get free childcare. So, that's meant to be for some of those part-time positions, like those latchkeys that are hard to fill, is we're saying to folks, come, work those positions, bring your kids, they get free latchkey, you can make some additional money. And even those are not getting us people. So, that being said, I say to folks, yell it from the treetops, send people our way. If you know people, we definitely are trying to hire and want to hire. So, but there are other positions other than latchkey, so check that website all through the year. And it's not like it used to be in schools where we were set. We were just talking about this earlier, and then everybody stayed in place for the whole year. Unfortunately, there's much more mobility in our workforces and positions are coming up throughout the whole year. We are closed for school of choice, but residents have the ability to come and register anytime. So, when we say registration's still open, that is for residents only at this point in time. And kudos to all of our staff who have worked extremely hard to get this year kicked off in a very positive way. So, thank you to all of you.
Any other comments? No? Anything else on the board? Nope. All right, moving on to item F, student representative report. I believe, like to introduce our new student rep for 2025-26, Ms. Rexroad. Welcome.
The early childhood center's buzzing with enthusiasm. They welcomed 285 enthusiastic new students. Enrollment is still growing as they continue to add new students weekly as schedules and space allows. On August 20th, they hosted their early childhood center welcome night. It was a fantastic success. It was part one to see the school filled with active students, parents and families. This event provided a wonderful opportunity for families to meet their child's teacher, drop off supplies and explore their new classroom. The brand new playground was a big hit with many of the new students who loved it till the end of the night. As they dive into their fourth year preschool, they are focusing on building relationships, fostering trust and helping students become familiar with the classroom expectations. Now, the faculty are jumping into curriculum, offering countless chances to join the life and play in excellent ways. They are all looking forward to a wonderful 2025 and 26 school year. The start of the school year went very smoothly at the Franklin House. They enjoyed the new welcome night for new families, their curriculum open house, or PTO donors in the doorway, as well as the fun run kickoff. This year, Princeton's fun run will be held on Friday, October 3, in the afternoon, and they are most excited to be here. Princeton has also welcomed two new teachers this year, Mrs. Levell and Jordan and Mrs. McDonald in second grade. Princeton loves having them on the scene and is looking a great year. Greenwood has made some changes to the PBIS system this year, and students are very excited about this. Students are still rewarded for positive, responsible, respectful and safety behavior, but now there are many different things they can earn with the positive. Dr. Lee, Miss Pets does spot reward drugs in all the trip. Students are able to choose a small prize if their name is picked. On Friday, two slips are pulled from each grade level bucket, and those students can either pick a larger prize or sign up for an experience at the end of the month. This month, students can choose stand art with Miss Pets or open gym with Miss Steph. Then, all tickets are saved for the month, and at the end of the month, two tickets will be pulled and the lucky winners will get to have lunch ordered and food on by Miss Pets. Whether students are in young fives or fifth grade, they can pick a prize at interest staff. Each week, their buckets have been fuller and fuller of positive. Each week, their buckets have been fuller and fuller of posse. At Ardmont, they've been busy building positive relationships with students and their families. They've also been practicing their school-wide expectations and are working hard to follow events every day. This month, their focus has been on cooperation. They have a school-wide assembly where students learn what it means to cooperate and practice by working with their buddies. Ardmore's also been conducting the beginning of the year assessing so that they can see how to best support students in learning. They've already had some study events too. Their welcome night curriculum network is a success and helps new families feel connected. They're also looking forward to their PTO events like the Husky Hype and the Fall Fest. Harmonia had a very successful kickoff of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year with all scholars and families. Daily broadcast is back along with weekly core value assemblies to celebrate scholars each week with their PBIS committee. Their early childhood special education rooms have settled and are running two sessions daily out of their rooms. It is wonderful to see the preschoolers growing and learning so much each day. They make adorable, they make everyone stop in their tracks when they're at the ballot. They are coming along and they are adorable. Fall benchmark sessions are very great, capable of going on these first couple of weeks. This will help the teachers establish goals for students and classrooms. The benchmark data meetings will be next, where they create plans as a team for any scholar who thirty gaps. Lastly, Harmonia's fifth grade teacher, Mr. Farina, is working on a personal goal modeling for their scholars to their second step SEL programming. Check out the videos on the Harmonia website of his ball shot challenge as he attempts to chip his ball into a bucket placed on the roof in his garage. JMS stuff has absolutely started to scale. Their family welcome night, scheduled with that, and curriculum night, are all well-attended by hundreds of JMS families. And due to the parental involvement, the start of the year has been very successful. Jefferson's Welcome Week supported students and teachers their first week of school, learned all the great things happening at JMS, as well as the high expectations that lead them to growth and success. They are wrapping up fall interview and testing and are looking forward to a wonderful year of teaching and learning. JMS's sports teams for football, volleyball and cross country have begun their seasons. The staff at, the staff and students at LHS would like to welcome back all of the LHS community for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We look forward to a great year. Welcome week at LHS. The first week of school, staff took time in each class to address a weighty weight, various policies, procedures and expectations for sugar, along with icebreakers and ice breakies for students and staff to get to know each other. On August nineteenth, the LHS administration and staff welcomed new families to LHS. During these valuable breakout sessions, families were able to meet staff and get familiar with the policies and procedures of LHS. Thank you to all staff, students and families who participated. On September twelfth, the first coffee with the principal was conducted. Thank you for your attendance. This is a great way to discuss various big picture topics presently at LHS while looking forward to future. Last week, students participated in our first session of interview and testing. This will give staff valuable insight into our students' learning, which allows for more tooling and learning experience. Next week is homecoming week. We look forward to this annual celebration of LHS. The pep assembly's at two, the parade's at six, and the game is at seven PM on Fridays the twenty-sixth. The dance play plays on the twenty-seventh from seven to ten PM. Thank you.
Well, once again, lots going on. Thank you for your share with all that's happening and if at any time you find it appropriate or you need to go because you have studies they have to take care of and you want to take off, you know, feel free, but if you want to stick around, by all means, you're more than welcome to stay, so welcome. Any comments from the board? Nope? Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to general, item A, superintendent's twenty twenty-five, twenty-six goals.
Early in August, the board reviewed and heard a short presentation about the proposed superintendent's goals for twenty-five, twenty-six. At this time, administration seeks acceptance of the board related to the superintendent's previously shared and proposed twenty-five, twenty-six goals, which focus on continued implementation of the district's strategic plan twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven, with particular focus on the four, five priority areas, including teaching and learning, character leadership and service, community engagement, learning environment and financial stability.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six superintendent's goals as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, support by Mr. Bear, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item B, board policy and administrative regulation updates, second reading approval.
At this time, administration is requesting that the board approve the policy and administrative regulations updates as provided by Miller Johnson, our policy consultants. The first reading for consideration of these policy and regulation updates was completed at the August five, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Those proposed updates include changes in the following areas, bylaws sections, policy sections two thousand six, five thousand fourteen, six thousand two, six thousand three, six thousand four, eight thousand eight, and administrative regulations in similar areas, two thousands, three thousands, six thousands and eight thousands series. Administration recommends approval at this time.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the policy and administrative regulation updates as provided by Miller Johnson as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion.
It says here that the areas highlighted in yellow require additional information from you to complete the update. Is that from us? Are you asking if it's one or the other, the IDS or the school district?
No, that's, it depends on whether you're an ISD or a school.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure.
Good question. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to personnel, item A, the revised changes in personnel.
Tonight, administration is bringing forward the following changes in personnel since the last presentation to the Board of Education on August fifth. New hires, Rebecca Radomski, district social worker, Art Anderson, Jefferson Middle School Resource Room teacher, Nicole Lasky, Wheat preschool co-op, Arianna Martel, Wheat preschool co-op, Ryanna Miller, Wheat preschool co-op, Michaela Schiller, Wheat co-op, Morgan Shaner, Wheat preschool co-op, Ryan Malcolm, Wheat preschool GSRP associate teacher, Megan Taylor, Wheat preschool GSRP associate teacher, Kiri Alvarez, Princeton latchkey part-time assistant, Cheyenne Birch, Princeton Elementary third grade teacher, and Alyssa Dayringer, Greenwood Elementary fourth grade teacher. Reassignments as listed, resignations as listed, fall sports athletic coordinator, John Carr, virtual school mentors as listed, Schedule B, new coaches and sponsors, Kalea Konizuski, Lakeview High School Marching Band Camp Assistant and Marching Band Season Assistant, Christina Karen, Lakeview High School Marching Band Camp Assistant and Band Season Assistant, Joe Trupiano, Lakeview High School JV Football Assistant Coach, fifty percent, Matt Lentz, Lakeview High School JV Football Assistant Coach, fifty percent, Brian Yamada, Lakeview High School Girls Golf JV Coach, Jaylen Williams, Jefferson Middle School Seventh Grade Football Head Coach, Lexi Putu, Jefferson Middle School Seventh Grade Volleyball Head Coach, and Schedule B Returning Coach and Sponsors as listed.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the changes in personnel as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Have we any...
We do, we do. I'm going to have Art Anderson stand up first so that you can see. Art, we're thrilled to have him. We have been fortunate to lure him away from another school district not too, too far away. Art comes to us with his Bachelor of Science from Wayne State University, his Master's of Special Education, also from Wayne State, and his Ed Specialist from Wayne State University. And if that isn't enough, he's currently working on another endorsement, special ed endorsement for autism spectrum disorder. So you can see why we were just really itching to get him over here. He has experience with multiple school districts here in Macomb County, also in Port Huron, as well as having experience working for the state of Michigan for Michigan Rehabilitation Services. So a wide spectrum of experiences that he's bringing to the table to service our students and our families in a top-quality way. So we're thrilled to have you joining us and welcome to our team. We also have Cheyenne. Cheyenne is maybe one of my most recent hires. We were just together at the table doing her final interview yesterday and I was making an on-the-spot offer because we had references that had come back for Cheyenne that were super fantastic. And I was sharing with Cheyenne that she is on the other end of the spectrum and that she's beginning her career. And so she's coming to the table having some pre-student teaching experiences, teaching experience, student teaching, and some sub-experiences. And it isn't often that we have someone who is brand new, who is able to speak so highly and eloquently about the services she can provide for kids. She's very well-prepared to start her career in the classroom and we're super excited to have her joining us. So Cheyenne, welcome, welcome. And before you sit down, you brought guests. Would you like to introduce your guests?
This is Dawson, my older boyfriend.
Yeah.
I have my grandma and my mom.
Ah, very good, excellent.
First of all, I need to apologize because I wasn't sure if Cheyenne was going to be at this coordinator. She's actually Princeton's third hire, right? So I'm sorry, I didn't have my report yet.
Yes, I guess.
I got my report a couple days before I came on in.
Yeah. Well, we got, we got her on the revised agenda, but you didn't get her on the revised report, so we're okay. Good deal, thank you so much. And that's who we have? Nope, that's who we have tonight, thank you.
All right, well, once again, welcome to the new hires here this evening, as well as those that are not here this evening, and we look forward to a long and prosperous career with you. Moving on with the agenda, bond implementation, item A, bid pack number thirteen, Lakeview High School Locker Room Duck Work Change Order.
Tonight, administration is recommending a change order to Guy and Missler for installation of additional duck work in the pool locker rooms at Lakeview High School. During the demolition phase of the locker room ceilings, it was discovered that the existing drawings did not match up with the existing conditions above the ceilings. Once this was discovered, administration directed Barton Mallow Builders and Partners in Architecture to design a solution to ensure that the reconnection of the HVAC duck work within the girls' locker room was done correctly. PIA designed the appropriate solution. Pricing was submitted to Barton Mallow Builders by Guy and Missler, who is a mechanical contractor for bid package thirteen. Once pricing was submitted, it was reviewed by administration, Barton Mallow Builders and PIA all found pricing to be appropriate for the scope of work and therefore is recommended the board approve a change order and contract increase to Guy and Missler in the amount of thirty thousand one hundred and ninety dollars.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education appropriate murder and act of increase to G, considering the revenue of thirty thousand and one hundred and eighty dollars. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, support by Ms. Stanton, discussion on the motion.
I have a question. What is, what is when the existing drawings did not match the condition? The buildings don't change, what was the difference?
Uh, it was found that that unit had to be replaced, so it's the girls' locker room and we would like to service the boys' locker room. So when it was discovered, it was a different structure.
The nineteen fifty's drawings didn't illustrate all of those things?
No. Two things didn't illustrate. How's the pool looking?
Dry.
Dry.
Dry. Right now, we're two months behind schedule. Two months.
So what's the estimated time of opening that thing up? At this point?
What I was told?
Yes.
October tenth-ish. October fourteenth is senior night. And my daughter's a senior swimmer, so it would be.
Okay. Any other comments?
Where are these swimming pools?
Uh, they're practicing at South Lake and thankfully, our teams that we were going to swim, our home meets, were courteous enough to let us come and swim at their place. We, we sent our officials there, we paid for the officials. Even when we went to Anchor Bay, we paid mileage for our official to go up there, so. But very courteous of them to let us swim there, so.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item B, bid pack number thirteen, change order, Lakeview High School Deduct.
Tonight, administration is recommending a deduct change order to Advance Building Group LLC for work removed at Lakeview High School. This deduct change order, excuse me, was identified during the procurement phase of batting cage to be installed at Lakeview High School. During these discussions, it was determined that the original location for the batting cage would not be suitable and alternative location was sought, sought, excuse me. Once the second location was investigated, the cost for the new installation became cost prohibitive, therefore the decision was made to eliminate the batting cage from ABG's scope of work. This deduct change order was viewed by administration, Barton Mallow and Partners in Architecture, and all found pricing to be appropriate for the reduction in scope of work. Therefore, it's recommended that the board approve a deduct change order and contract decrease to Advance Building Group LLC for a total savings of thirty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve a deduct change order and contract decrease to Advance Building Group LLC for the total in savings of thirty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, support by Mr. Asia, discussion on the motion.
Well, my next question is, I begin, so there's no batting cage whatsoever coming or?
We're not putting a batting cage in at this point. We've got, still got one in the main gym. We were going to put an additional one in and it just, the height of the ceiling and the location we were going to put it in, it could be reached by kids if they jumped up and touched it, they could yank on it, so.
Only line drives, that's it.
Yeah, that's right.
Line drive and you're out.
That's right, that's right.
No home runs.
I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a baseball fan, but I mean, people are, I mean, should we continue looking for?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to continue to look.
Pursue it for other baseball.
It was extremely cost prohibitive to put it in our gym. The engineers wanted to spend like a million dollars in steel to put, put this up, so we were like, so we're, I'm going to continue to look outside of this to see if there's other solutions with, that we might be able to do, so.
Yeah, please, please continue to find out.
That's right.
Any ideas?
Did, did we already buy the net for it though?
We did not.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item C, bid pack number thirteen, district-wide keying and coring for additional spaces.
Tonight, administration is recommending change order and contract increase to Advance Building Group LLC for district-wide door keying and coring in the additional spaces that have been added through the twenty nineteen bond. In the twenty nineteen bond, the keying of any new doors was not included in the scope for any contractors. And with these spaces being completed, administration began discussions with Barton Mallow Builders and Partners in Architecture to engage with Advance Building Group to, to provide a price to install cores that were on the district's Yale high-security key system. Barton Mallow Builders and PIA worked with the administration to provide the correct key sequences for each individual door that needed a core and provided those to ABG. ABG provided pricing, which, which was reviewed by Barton Mallow and Partners in Architecture. They found all pricing to be appropriate for the scope of work and are recommending the following change order for, and contract entries to Contractors Advanced Building Group. Therefore, administration directed Barton Mallow to proceed with this work to have the new cores installed prior to the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And therefore, administration recommends approval of increase in contract through change order to Advance Building Group in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve increase in contract through change order to Advance Building Group in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars as presented. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion.
Yeah, so how was that missed in the preliminary stages? Every door has to be keyed.
It was just left out of the design. Blood answer I can give you. Typically, when you do these, whoever is installing the doors gets the cores and the keying, and then they work with me to get with our local locksmith to provide any keys and cores, whatever they need, so. So I can't answer why it happened, I just know that it was not in anybody's scope of work throughout this project.
Any other comments?
I do have one question for the team. Some of the doors are cored, some of them are not yet. Is my, I've been around the district buildings for the last, you know, week, week or so. What is the deadline outcome that we're gonna end up with? Needed to be cored, keyed, done?
I'd like to circle back to principles, because those are my understanding, things are, things are a whole lot better than adding the card readers that we did and some of the remaining entries.
Well, I, like, I found, I found card reader doors that had construction cores in, or some other core. I'm not gonna say it's a construction core, but, and I tried my Yale Master, and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't gonna fit in the hole, so literally, it's in the last two days.
I guess it wasn't on my radar, but I'll dive into it tomorrow and investigate.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. On to business, the revised agenda item, Food Service Program Pizza Bid.
This evening, administration is bringing forward two pizza vendors for 25, 2025 through 2028. The district solicited competitive bids for the provision of pizza products for student meals and related food service operations in accordance with board policy and state Michigan Department of Education procurement requirements. District received and reviewed bid submissions from qualified vendors with careful evaluation of pricing, quality, delivery terms, compliance with nutritional program standards. District has selected Domino's and Hungry Howies as co-vendors to ensure prompt and consistent delivery to split an annual amount of approximately $180,000 in costs at food services discretion. Therefore, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the bid from Domino's and Hungry Howies as co-vendors and the most responsive and responsive and responsible bidders in the amount of $180,000 approximately annually.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the pizza bid for 2025 to 2028, question mark, to Domino's and Hungry Howies for approximately $180,000 annually. Is that the right span, three years?
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, support by Mr. Asia, discussion on the motion.
I'll just add one thing. Over the years, we've had a variety of vendors, and then most of them are franchisees, and they may own several stores in their franchises. And they tend to, you know, have difficulty sometimes staffing in the early morning when you have to really produce quite a bit to service our needs. A few years back, we, we went to co-serve, co-vendors, because in the end, sometimes they can't do the job, and they might alert us to that the day before, and then we are able to go to the second vendor or trade-off. And sometimes it doesn't make one happy if they think they can do it all, but we know from experience, that's not necessarily how it works. So, just so you understand that piece.
Now, does it get separated evenly, or do we give more to Hungry Howies because they give us a better price?
Not necessarily evenly. And, and who can handle the full delivery sometimes and who can't? Or if sometimes they might say, oh, I didn't get my delivery, you know, whatever, you know, circumstances like that come up, so. Sort of on a day-to-day basis, and Tammy's out there, you know, she probably can.
There's a new one down, down the street from us.
Because elementary, like, Art Martin, you want to get one, one week?
No one wants to do it.
The high school and middle school, and they get a little behind, and we have to, you know, maybe ask Hungry Howies to pick up the, the McDonald's, pick up the classes, whichever one's gonna do it. I pretty much agree, I feel like. We try to do it evenly, but cost-wise, I'll be honest, last year, those numbers all higher than people who work for me, and I'm not doing well with my elementary buildings. We've been feeling messy with that time in the classes, so they honestly told me straight up that they could not do it. So they didn't even come up with that. Which was disappointing. They've been, for fifteen years, I've gone there, and they've been.
Well, we appreciate Hungry Howies and their cost-effectiveness.
Funny how complicated pizza is. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, moving on to other, closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communication.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve going into closed session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileges communication.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Asia?
Yes.
Mr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. DeBroski?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Stanton?
Aye.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go into a brief recess here. It is, for the record, it is 8:14. We'll reconvene at 8:20, so we have a six-minute break. We will return in closed session, and it is unlikely there will be any action following the closed session, and there will be no more broadcasts on the internet following this point.